It's six o'clock. We're heading to call to order, City of Kennedy City Council, regular council meeting, September tenth, two thousand nineteen. Commander, follow.
President.
Here.
Here.
Councilman.
Here.
Councilwoman.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, would you serve for us?
Well, we'll be, we'll do this after the rain. We'd like to have some more, but we thank for what we got. We ask that you would be with us and help us make good decisions and help us be understanding of each other and move our city so we can move our city forward. In your son's name we pray.
Amen.
Our pledge is to survive, a nation safe from America, and to govern with which saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any injustice at all.
Amanda, do you have anyone signed up for citizen comments? Four people, okay. Set a timer for two minutes, please. Hey, is there anybody that didn't have the opportunity to sign up for citizen comments that would like to sign up? Anyone wishing to speak on a citizen comment? No? Okay.
Clara Ramos.
Clara Ramos.
Thank you. As a Canadian, they're not Canadian, I'm here tonight to say, first of all, about how ashamed I am of two council members for conspiring with the mayor and the city manager against the city employee event we pulled. I have been told of one of the two forgot when the police came to his assistance. We're back and remember what you went through. And the other allowing herself to be used in such a propaganda is really sad when you and the mayor were clearly seen and passing notes during the meeting like school kids. It shows how easily you can be used and manipulated. You can clearly see in the video of that meeting where that was going on. So it brings me to believe this is one of the reasons why the mayor is so against recordings of the meetings. The recordings show transparency this city government does not have. So I'm here tonight to ask each of you council members if you are against transparency. And if you're not, then we must bring recordings of every meeting to where everyone in their home can see and hear what goes on in their town. There are many that cannot attend because situations like babysitting, work, or transportation that usually keep someone away from showing up. So that's why it is so important for the recordings to be taken from somewhere better than the very back of the small meeting room. And as council members, you should want for your mayor to allow your constituents to see. Also, I have to say that as council members, I am also very disappointed that you allow your mayor to continue acting as God. No one should dictate to you on how you serve your constituents. Your mayor is a bully because he was a bully most of his life, and he is not above the law. He has broken so many laws, and to have a city attorney to allow him to do so doesn't say much about them as well. As city council members, you must take control of your city and start working together as a community. You know that one person take control. You must stop the mayor from micromanaging in all departments, and you must stay on top of the interim city manager because the decisions made should not be the decisions of the mayor only. I pray this town to have better leadership than what is currently here today. Thank you.
Mayor Sutton and members of the city council. This all started, a friend of mine asked me if the agenda for the September fifth city council meeting was posted in city hall when I was there on the front porch in front of the display case on Monday, September second, waiting for the doors to be unlocked. I said, no, I was there from five fifty P M. to six P M., and there was something one thing posted in the display case when I left at six P M. Just for your reference, this is what was posted when I was there on the front steps. It was the only thing posted. September second meeting was canceled, stamped across it. I had a lot of time to look at it while waiting on the doors to be unlocked. I looked at it several times to verify, I'm talking about the September second agenda now, to verify that the meeting day was indeed September second because it was unusual to see so few cars and people in city hall just before a city council meeting. The next day, when I first saw the September fifth agenda, I looked closely and I saw that indeed the city secretary certified that the agenda had been posted in compliance of state law at five P M. on September second. I knew that this was not true because I was there between five fifty P M. and six P M. on September second. And I knew for a fact that September fifth agenda was not posted at five P M., which contradicts what the city secretary swore to in writing on the bottom of the agenda. When I realized that what was printed on the agenda was completely false, I'll be honest, this made me very angry. We have seen too many examples of dishonesty with the current city administration, one person in one city staff position in particular. What was sworn to in writing was blatantly false, could be considered as falsification of government document, which is a very serious crime. I was at the September fifth meeting, and frankly, I was stunned to hear it said that videos showing the city secretary posting the September agenda, September second agenda with big letters reading canceled across it proves that the September fifth agenda was posted at the same time. It does not prove that, it proves that the canceled September second agenda was posted at that time. I don't know when the September fifth agenda was placed in the display case, but I can say for certain it was not there when I left city hall at six P M. I have timestamped photographs and text messages to verify this. City secretary told the city council the September fifth agenda was posted at five fifty seven P M., and this is not true. Is it possible the city secretary posted it at the tail end of six P M. just as I walked away from the city hall front porch? Yes, but in my opinion, very, very unlikely. If that was the case, the video would show that the city secretary made two trips to the display case, the first trip to post the cancellation notice, and then another trip to post the agenda for the September fifth meeting. The first time I saw, can I have one moment?
Sure.
The first time I saw the September fifth agenda in the display case was six twelve P M. on Tuesday, September third, so I know for a fact it was placed in there sometime between six P M. Monday and six twelve P M. Tuesday. Has anyone reviewed the video from six P M. Monday through six twelve P M. Tuesday? Just check and see if the city secretary made a second trip to the display case. Is it possible the September fifth agenda was posted precisely at six P M.? Why take a chance? Why not post an agenda for September sixth? What is the urgency of the items on this agenda that would cause the city to risk being found in violation of the law and potentially causing a court to vacate any action taken in the meeting? Position of city secretary carries great responsibility, and it is critically important for any city to have an honest and competent person in that role. What date and time was the September fifth agenda emailed to the mayor and city council members? What date and time was it posted online? Is there any reason why agendas can't be emailed to city officials, posted online, and posted in the display case at the same time? I have more to say, but my time is up. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sutton, ladies and gentlemen, city council members. Let's read a headline. It's follows. Twenty-two Texas towns hit with ransomware attack in new front of cyber assault. This week, state officials confirmed that twenty-two municipalities have been infiltrated and ransomed and ended. Texas is the latest state to be hit with a cyber attack. The state officials confirming this week that computer systems in twenty-two municipalities have been infiltrated by hackers and ransom. The FBI and state security experts are examining the ongoing breach, which began Friday morning and has inflicted mostly smaller local governments. Officials have not disclosed which specific places are affected. It's dated August twentieth, two thousand nineteen. My understanding is the city, hey, it does not have an IT department, and it has a third party that handles their computer systems. And the reason for bringing this up is that the city of Kennedy requires social security in addition to driver's license and proof of ownership of property to have water turned on. Surprise drill implementations, sorry, implications, ensuring that the city adheres to local state requirements, they're in force with recent laws that have been passed, and that all city members and local employees also adhere to these laws and the changes as they take place. Thank you.
Three or eight cars, those three or eight, three or nine, everything.
Anyone else?
Pat Wright.
Pat Wright?
Yes.
Pat Wright.
Good evening all. I am Pat Wright, I live here in Kennedy. I have a few things, and I have them written down for the sake of time. Recording, by placing the cameras in a location such as the back of the room, you're doing a few things. You're failing to be transparent, which some of you ran your campaign on. Recording devices are unable to pick up the sound clearly or get a proper view of the full council, attorney, city manager, and city secretary. The citizens have a right to see, hear, and record everyone in public meetings. The recording equipment is unable to get a view of any of the speakers that might address the council due to the current location. PowerPoints or maps that are being shown on the wall are unable to be seen and recorded due to the current location. Recording equipment can be set up anywhere other than the back of the room without obstruction to any of the citizens in attendance. It had been done in the past with no issues. Now, the thing that concerns me the most is the A D A issue. This is not an A D A hearing room. Citizens that are hearing visually and mobility impaired are not accommodated. Some council members refuse to speak up or use microphones, or a tendency to mumble. Citizen, let's see, uh, let's see. Citizens with mobility issues, just getting in the room would be difficult with a chair or a scooter. If they were able to get in, where's that handicap specified location for the mobility impaired? In event of an emergency, a mobility impaired citizen cannot exit the room without endangering themselves or others within the room. Emergency exit code compliance. The back exit door is being blocked by the recording equipment, currently being placed in front of the door, a door that clearly states, do not block. The door is not labeled properly for emergencies. The door also has a latch that remains locked during the meeting. This room is not labeled properly for the public. It should state proceeding capacity. If there is a post on the wall, then I apologize. The easiest way to solve all these issues and concerns would be to hold a city meeting in the city auditorium and just have them last.
Anyone else? Does anyone else not have the opportunity to sign up for the council? No? Okay. Item number six, consider act on consent agenda. Anything you guys want to pull on the consent agenda to discuss? Nothing? Can you move it?
I'll make a motion and pull it out. B, Alamo Control Board.
Alamo, Alamo Control, B?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second that.
All right. Anything else? No? Okay, just discuss it.
Yes, um, we were talking about perhaps adding a position to the Alamo Control. Have we started taking applications for it, or?
Chief?
Do we actually have somebody in that position now? Anthony Foley, just come over and take care of some.
Okay. Anthony Foley took that spot?
Yes, sir.
So we didn't go out and publish it or hire him?
No.
Hey, chief. Anything else on Alamo Control Board? No? Anything else you guys want to pull?
I'm sorry.
No, that we want to, uh, you want to accept these? I'll consider motion to accept these.
I'll make a motion to accept our consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? There's no other discussion, follow.
Councilor Green?
Yes.
Councilor Lynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilman?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Yes. Motion back to the same view. Item number seven, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance number nineteen dash eight and ordinance making appropriations for the support of the City of Kennedy, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand nineteen, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty, appropriating money to a C T N interest fund to pay a principal in interest on the cities in debtness utilizing surplus funds from the water and sewer I M N account and capital improvement account for water and wastewater facility upgrades and adopting the annual budget of the City of Kennedy for two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty fiscal year. Movement?
I'll make a motion, we consider agenda item number seven.
Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I had a couple questions, Amanda, with the new budget that was sent out. On page four, under capital outbreak and equipment, um, those debt services, I noticed that that increased.
Yes, if you look on page one or half highlight, it's the four B bond chain.
Okay.
The four eighty-seven, so I'm bringing it into our revenue and we're kicking it out to a debt service to pay for it. Pay for it's more I M.
Okay. Um, I think I had two more questions.
Take your time.
Under page ten, under code compliance, I noticed, is there an additional officer that's going under that, or why did the salary increase? Because the last one that I had, I think it was like fifty-one-five.
There's actually another, there's a whole one.
Okay. So that's the second position?
Yes.
Oh, and under Parkinson Reg, um, under supplies you need to department, I think in that last budget workshop, it was like two or three thousand, and now it increased to a hundred?
Yes, what that is, it's, um, I'm sorry, what it is, it's, it's, it's providing supplies to run some sessions when the, I believe it was just the supply supply that's, because it's very tough.
Oh, and then, I think this is my last one. Under water and sewer, um, is page twenty, is there an additional position being put into that spot? Does the salary fringe all increase on the last meeting?
Are you, you mean the twenty-sixty one?
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry, I'm reading. I'm, yeah, this is the one I was getting held out. No, that was the one that they emailed, but I don't, let's see, sorry. Well, it's the streets and water department, I mean, the water and sewer department, I'm sorry.
Is it the, hey, if you're talking about page twenty-two, on the salary, what that is, before we didn't have inclusion of all the boards there. And so half the salary is coming out of our general and half the salary is coming out of our water.
Okay. Okay.
That's why we need.
That was it.
Anybody have anything else?
I have a question on the cost of living. I know we talked about that today. Is that what it's going to be, a cost of living adjustment?
Well, it's plugged in as a, as a cross-the-board percentage, cross-the-board, not, not based on merit.
Okay, so everybody will, everybody will be across the board?
Which y'all decide otherwise.
Yeah, everyone will get the same across the board on the even. Previously, we discussed that a cost of living didn't really work for the City of Kennedy. Merit raises made more sense, and that's what it was based on. I said, I believe this at the limit to three percent, and supervisor could give one, two, or three percent, if that helps.
Yeah, I don't like that.
I think everyone should get straight across.
It's been abused in the past, and I just think it should be fair across.
Board, we could just have that where everyone gets the same, three, it's three percent, everyone gets three percent, it's not decided by, okay, or his, or his.
At least not this year.
Just, just a comment on that, friends, have, have looked at it, if we had a effective, well-measured evaluation system, appraisal system, where it would call it, and it pretty clearly said, this person deserves a fair enough, one percent, three percent, then sure, I'd recommend what you just described. But in lack of, lack of that, I think fairness, I think a fair way to do it is discuss fairness, three percent, possibly, if the grievance is broken down.
And I think that's something we should probably work on, your evaluation.
Yeah, we need some type of evaluation program where we can actually merit an increase because we don't want to make, we don't want to make everybody a piece of it.
That's right.
We don't want everybody to know, no matter how well I perform, I'm going to get what I'm, I'm going to get my increase. We want people to strive to be the best that they can be, and we want to be able to reward them for doing that and not reward the ones who are not performing.
And that's the point.
And it's, it's fair to, to do it that way. But if you don't have a system in place where you can establish that, and they know what needs to happen, then you create what we have now. And, you know, I just, I don't think, I, I've never been a, everybody get the same time, because you don't get the same performance from everybody.
Well, that's true, but until we have that in place, I think right now it'd be a fair thing to do across the board until we have that in place.
So what is the raise for? What, what, what would we give a raise for right across the board? Just, I mean, just because it showed up to work? I mean, there would be, it wouldn't matter if somebody came in late ten times versus the guy that came in early every day and did his job to the, for this.
Let me respond. Thank to your, yes, that you, interesting, man, but that being priority for a, a performance available system counter to that is Councilmember Lynn talking about, that they, the employee that is not performing. You already have it placed with your own personal policies, a performance improvement plan that the employee can be put on. If someone is not performing, or not going to work, or not showing up, or not doing their job, that's already in place. But the supervisor, they should take those, those measures to correct that behavior, certainly those people would not be allowed to be a merit, or a merit type thing. To answer your question, Mary, what this is simply is a cost of living, as we say, is equal or costing.
That brings up my next question. Cost of living for you and I is the same, correct?
Cost of the percentage.
Well, that's my point. You're already, you're the city manager, and I'm the guy at the bar. Your wage is already up here, right? But you're going to get three percent of what? Three percent of your wage, but my cost of living is the same as yours. But I'm only going to get three percent of my wage. Where do I ever get to close that gap? I mean, if we want to be true to the employees, and we want to say, let's go across the board, let's give them all the same, let's do like the government does. If everybody gets eight hundred a year, everybody gets eight hundred a year, the gap's already created in the, I guess, in the total board.
It works the same for social security.
There is, there is an argument for not, for a non-percentage, and a lot of municipalities do do that, and they go in the figure. However, they go, okay, this, this person's base pay is this, but their rate is this. The assumption is that a percentage increase in their rate of pay is a fair adjustment, is equal to the person next to them, like, you know, it's a, it's simply a percentage increase.
Right, there are, whatever, whatever the rules say is fair, and I just want the council to understand, you don't make the rules, you carry out the rules that these guys give to you. But these are all the challenges that come with them. So that there's a lot of different, well, you think this is fair, and I think this is fair, but in reality, the gaps are created. If you want to just give it to everybody across the board, I'm okay with your way. But let's give it to them, right? It's not, you get five hundred dollars, I get fifty. That's not, there's no motivation for me to come to work. Well, I gotta put in my forty dollars, you know, sorry. You've seen that, so I think that's where the merit comes into play. Hard work pays off.
I think merit is a, is a separate tribe form, there's certainly, certainly, a fair, but it's fair, it's a point, it's a system, where I've seen some real bad ones, where I've seen in any occasion where the grievance is filed because it's obviously unfair, it's a little bit unfair. Yeah, I'm, fair is a very subjective term, I guess, it's a system.
And I would, I would agree with that, and what you said earlier about the system that we have in place for the supervisors, but the supervisor that has done his job and worked with this individual and done all that can be done to help this individual become better, and they still didn't become better, they still don't get that same increase. So that system doesn't work unless it has some merit tied to it where it can be affected. Because it doesn't matter to them, they know they're going to get their increase, period. So why should they work toward getting the certification, or work toward doing what they need to do to be better, work toward becoming better, work toward doing what they need to do so that they can become more of an asset for the city instead of a liability? So, you know, I just.
I can see that point too, but I think right now, until we have some type of evaluation, something, because we have nothing, or whatever we have, I've seen it abused many, many times. Supervisor will give you, you, and you, but I don't like you, I'm not going to give it to you, so we either do it across the board or do nothing. I can go either way.
Just, and again, just bringing, just anecdotal, but I'm, I'm not suggesting to do either way, or one way or the other, what I'm saying is seeing it, large and small cities alike, or struggling with the same issue, and I've seen it where it's based on performance, and sometimes works just fine, seeing it where it's, where it's simply a percentage decided by, you know, C I P. and given across, I've seen it where it's been a flat amount, and I don't know that it's a perfect one, but I do think that where you are today, whatever you decide to either put in or not, you really ought to have, you need a very objective performance measure system. You just do it.
What do you need from, from council to, to help you get this done?
I think you got it. I think we just, we have a direction to work on that, and we hope within sixty to ninety days, I can bring your pay to performance evaluation plan, that will be effective. And to add what we've said, I've seen cities that have done both, where they had a flat rate, cost of living, supplemented by a performance merit next to pay, where an employee could get, for example, they got three percent across the board on October first, and then an additional three percent that was available for those employees to sell and do. And so some, some measure that might incorporate both, but there's just no time to have something like that in place before this budget goes into place.
That might be something we can do next year.
I would say next year, I would say we can get an evaluation system in place, and the next year, y'all decide what balance of those two pieces you want to put in place, or one piece of, we'll have the system in place.
The one you're talking about is probably the, kind of, I love this best price. The ones you're talking about, it's probably the, kind of, I love the best practice of mine, because most part of the temper, where there is a, you can go five percent, where it's a, see, the cost of living, merit adjustment, the beginning, the, the, the consensus is, I think what I've seen is, well, everybody gets across the board, and I've seen it with two percent, three percent, again, then, you know, CIP or whatever, and then, even, and I've even seen it where, where you can budget, and like, you go into each cost center, and stuff like that, and you budget in there, you propose that additional percentage amount, and put it in here, and so you don't go over that. So, then, now you're becoming arbitrary, and then you're saying, well, only, I'm gonna run out of money, everybody can see, their expectations. So, all I'm saying is, I don't know if a perfect system, but I think if you're, you're headed a long ways, please put something in place, I think if you have it on the other side, if we use, I see performance improvement plans, processes, your policy systems to be amended, because I think there's some contradictions in it, looking at that, so you have a problem. As long as managers do their job, and that, that certainly correct those and correct it, and I think it's a good performance measure for you, very close and working.
And that goes for everybody, employee, supervisor?
All the way.
I'm sorry, who, who is the gentleman? I'm sorry. Could you introduce yourself?
Sure.
I hear everybody asking, who is that?
My name's Chris Breton, I'll be your interim city manager for the next few months while we take the full-time city.
Oh, okay, we thought he was the interim.
Well, he was until, we're switching out today.
I see.
A lot of y'all might remember me, I was here last year as your interim police chief.
Oh.
That's why my face might look familiar, and might want to throw rocks at me, I don't know. But I'll be here as your interim city manager for the next five or six weeks.
Thank you so much for introducing yourself.
Okay, anything else?
Would you guys be interested in just doing a certain amount instead of a percentage addition, or to figure all this out? Everybody would get something, and it would just be a certain amount, not a percentage?
What are we thinking about?
Just, so we could report everybody, and it would be an amount across the board.
How many employees do we have?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one? This coach will pop above. Yeah, I don't know if this helps you guys, but this doesn't happen to be a rule tonight. You can, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of disappointed you just got this right now. I would really rather you take it home and look at it for a few days, and come back next week, special meeting, whatever you have to do, but I want you to know what's in there. I don't want any surprises. I don't know how many pages we got here, but I want to make sure you know exactly what is in here.
So what?
I have two other ones here. There's been a lot of changes from the initial one, which we all knew that. I don't want nothing going by anybody, because in the end, it's coming back to you. I would take this home, and I would look at it again, and I would look very closely at everything.
At least that way, we, I guess we can all kind of go and think about what number you would want to fairly give everybody across the board, and kind of, and then come back to the table and say, okay, well, this is what I think, and then kind of judge on what you're gonna be stating.
Every rule that the city candidate uses comes from the city council. So, if you're gonna make a rule, I want you to have all the information, so yes, you can.
So what, what would, Amanda, what would you say the median salary is for the employees? Forty, forty-five thousand? Like, you went from very top to the very low and kind of put it in the middle? Because I, I took forty thousand, and so, one percent of forty thousand is four hundred dollars, so would, if we were saying three percent, will it be twelve hundred dollars across the board increase, something that y'all would consider?
Twelve hundred dollars would be three percent of forty thousand.
Sixty-one thousand dollars.
So you're talking about one percent?
No.
No, no, no.
The twelve hundred, oh, twelve hundred dollars?
Yeah.
If we did a high salary, and a low salary, and we did a lower salary, we'd see, um, a lesser income percentage, you're leaving, really equal, rather than be fifty-six thousand.
Fifty-six thousand.
And it would have a facility.
So that would be sixteen eighty-eighty. So then that would be, turns out fifty-one employees, that'd be eighty-five thousand, eighty-five six.
That's range.
Maybe if people kind of think about it a little longer, and kind of figure out, is it?
So, would the lowest, would the lowest be the position that would be seventy-six percent?
You know, I asked for this list that they're asking for, in the email, for all employees specifically for this, but I, so, I mean, I, I really want to see what every employee currently makes, what they made a month ago, and what they make today.
If, apart from what's in here, or?
Yes. I, I just think that's a valuable piece of information that everybody should have if they're asked to make these decisions. I mean, I just... If, if, if every, every single employee and their salary, what is... But they were just candidate today. They don't, they didn't get it yesterday.
She emailed it out. I got it Friday.
Yeah, I got it Friday.
They have the, they have the status at the bottom, and they had every, just their department.
Okay, so it has words that show what they made last, uh, a month ago.
What?
Because there's been some raises since then, right?
Yes, and that's included in the...
That's what they're making today, but not what they're made yesterday, not what they made last month.
No, yeah, that doesn't change.
So I'm trying to figure out how we got two raises in one year, and now we're asking for more money for the next budget, which is three weeks away. That's what I'm trying to see, and I, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. Because some people did receive two raises this year. I'd really like for you all to study, please, and get every piece of information that you can get. When do we have to, when is the absolute drop date?
August thirtieth, I mean, September thirtieth. Sorry.
We're, we're planning a special call meeting next week.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll be, I'll, I'll just, that's why I'm asking, I just don't want to, not, I don't think I'm gonna, and there's nothing I can do to change, I'll be on those on that particular situation. Right, and, and I don't want anybody to miss it, Leslie, I really, truly don't, but it would still give you the, the time to look through it, and make sure that you understand what's...
As long as you don't have to do it next week, that's why it's two weeks worth for you. Twenty-fourth or what? I just have to inform the council that table number seven, you have to get to number one, because it's tied into the acceptance of budget for the next, just a year or so. You're getting table one, so it'll have to...
That's, that's what it'll have to be. I just rather everybody be able to look at the final budget for more than thirty minutes.
So when do you need to...
What, what do you...
Yeah, so what, we need to get them direction though, on, if we, if you want to see a final budget with no more changes, we kind of need it, or should we create two budgets? And have them plug in the numbers for a percent increase versus a lot increase?
This has a percent increase on it right now.
So this, this is three percent?
This has a three percent in it right now.
So when do you need, oh, I guess we can't do that.
Because we need a number.
Yeah.
And you want to get dollar, right?
I just, it's, it's too big of a budget for me to just say, oh, go ahead and do it. I really think I need to understand where everybody's acting, because if we need this budget, will we create a budget that works another day? You guys gave three percent, or allowed three percent for everyone. Some people are sitting more than three percent. Not this one, last week. Correct. We, we actually had three percent, and we said it was going to be a merit raise determined by the department. Right, so I, I think it's important that you guys are aware of who receives, who doesn't, and who got more than three percent, and who got less than three percent, because some people got to say it's a ten percent. I mean, I don't know if they give it all, it could happen, you need to know that, if that's the number that's in here now.
How big is it?
They shouldn't have, because they, they, they only, they were only given authorization to go up two, three percent. I understand that, I, I, I want you to see that for yourself, to see if that occurred or not.
This is what I'm talking about.
Well, let me, I'm working, kind of, quiz Amanda there, and I think, with what you're suggesting, the only raises should be either adjustment or paid, because their job, and the, the pay was adjusted, not just, hey, let's give somebody the payroll, it's not merit.
I just want them to see that, right, because I've asked for that, and I don't have that. I want to know what everybody made a month ago.
So let me ask you, councilor, your, your, your point, we can get the data. If an employee A is making seventeen an hour, and then employee A looks up at this job, and does a different set of work, and is now making eighteen, twenty-five an hour, does that matter? I mean, does that matter from their point of view? Would you not, would that person be measured in different, for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty? Because you moved to the different job, and I try to find that out. If it doesn't, you can pull those out, I don't know how that, I don't have that information. I don't want that to change for that employee. If you went across the board, give everybody a thousand dollars, would that employee still get a thousand dollars?
Yes.
I guess that's what I'm asking, what, why do you, what, what would that data, to you, we're happy to get it, we're happy to postpone it. I, I would suggest, unless there's something that we're missing, haven't provided, you know, considered budget, and amend this, like, this amended if you need to, and I don't know that we can give any more data to make them fair decisions. We'll get you anything more.
I stand against giving anybody a cost of living adjustment, but if I had to vote today, I would probably say just do nothing, and wait until we are established in our evaluation.
Do a mid-year.
To do maybe mid-year, or, I, I would suggest wait next year, we may have a new city manager by then, if they want to change things, I mean, that's just if we were doing it today, I might be a little more comfortable with that, but we can table it and come back and see what happens.
Whatever direction you all feel. And I'm comfortable either way. I mean, we have a three percent across the board in this budget right now. We just have to decide how we're gonna distribute that three percent.
Exactly.
You know, we could approve this budget with the three percent, and then, amend how we're gonna distribute the three percent. But, three percent is in it now.
We're kind of doing the math on what, councilor, what you just said, and then we'll plug in the number, uh, you could have a performance evaluation plan approved by then, you could, again, you could, you could need half those funds any way you want to distribute, whenever you wanted to, and not have to submit that, or you get suspended.
Right, because we don't have to give the increase on October one, so...
Yeah, this doesn't, you think that?
It's just there so we're ready for that.
But, just, just says the money's there, however you want to distribute. Where some cities have done it, where they'll say, we're gonna get one percent in October and two more percent in January.
Let me ask you this, who decided on the three percent? Because obviously it wasn't us. I mean, not that it matters, but just a number, okay, because I think that's what they used in the past.
Right, that's what we, right, y'all decide.
You guys have to decide what you want to do.
So do y'all want a budget, three percent, have the interim city manager come up with a performance evaluation, and just, October one, don't give the increase right away, and then once the performance evaluation is created, approved by us, explain to the department head maybe four months from now, and relinquish those funds when we figure out a plan on how to distribute those funds?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
I'm, I'm good with that. I, I have no problem with a person...
Yeah, all I ask.
Already noted, or whatever.
We don't have, we also save the pressure off all of them. All we can do tonight is say, we're gonna set that money aside later in the year.
And it has to come before the council, and then it will be in the minutes that October one, the raise won't happen right away, it has to come to us first. So then, is there any other questions then, on the budget?
Yeah, I have a few questions. I was wondering, um, the, looking at the city manager proposal for the salary, I was wondering if we can maybe add a ten percent in there for, to try to lure a city manager? In this case, we offer him the job, and then, he finds out the pay, and he decides to not work there, he can go somewhere else, and make more, provide this talent, that way it perhaps may be in there, ready to go, and, look, we can raise this X amount of dollars more, which you consider safe? Considering that city managers are hard to come by, when you get a good one, and we want to keep a good one to run the city candidate for the long term.
You're asking me or them, myself, Chris, talk about it, and Frankie, at this point, we're early in the, in the game. We've not already done a good market analysis, we personally, for this area, which is pretty difficult to do. I would, I think you're low, I do, I think, you know, competitive market, I think you're low. I don't know what the right percentage to plug in there, but I don't know, ten, twelve percent, but, doesn't mean you haven't paid, but it means you have it in there, or, frankly, in salaries, to do what you want to, whatever, do anything with it, but give you the opportunity, because to your point, he or she, they come in and go, it could be the difference in, it could be five thousand dollars, I just can't tell you about that. You can get on, you don't want to be locked in.
Locked in, get that.
To an open number. We have, we, we keep around, it's ten, thirteen percent.
Now, how would the council feel about that?
Eighty-five thousand is a good number, in my opinion.
I think so too.
If you compare it to other cities our size, even cities that are larger than us, and, and if we're gonna do that, if we're gonna compare everything, we're gonna have to go down the board, and do it to every position, eighty-five is what we're, I think we're able to pay. Now, once they get here, and they're here for a little while, every year, you can change that budget, you can do whatever you want, every year. I, I don't think you're gonna have a problem getting that for eighty-five thousand dollars, a good one. But you guys need to make that decision.
Yeah, because another thing, I mean, the proposed was eighty-four eight. I think eighty-five's pretty good when you consider all the other allowances that goes along with the city manager position. Now, if that position wasn't getting those other allowances, then I could possibly say otherwise, but I think if we exceed eighty-five thousand, that's kind of high, that, in my opinion.
Well, just put it in there, not me even have to use it, but it's there for the case where the person, like, can you go this much? They try to meet in the middle, go a little higher, they just start meeting in the middle, start negotiating.
It, it just simply gives you, I, I think eighty-five may be, or, it may be, you know, eighty-four, five, period, or fifty-three, just, you know, the only reason, we, we break it up now, because that's a problematic course, because it's, you're hitting officials here, and, you know, you're gonna try to have somebody who lives here, kind of, in the organization, so you actually have some lag, you have lag to save, it's probably been there at that time, and this council size, these people, probably has some options to adjust it, but I think, I think so, probably, okay.
Because that's eighty-five plus an additional eight thousand dollars.
And then include the dollars?
You were too right.
Ninety-three?
Yeah.
I thought you were joking, sorry.
And I would also look at, Amanda, where do we stand right now, look at the fire department? Uh, the last two years, we've gone on the high end of the collective volunteers line, five, ten, one oh four, and we set it for eighteen thousand, and we're estimated to go over. Have we gone over in the last two years, that amount?
No, that's just a one that we use, but, y'all, the elected official volunteers is only, gets used once a year.
Okay.
So the month that shows the fifteen, two oh nine that we've used is what we've used.
That was as of May thirty-first?
Yes.
Do you know where we stand right now?
It's the same.
It's the same, it hasn't changed, okay.
That's only, that, y'all only use it in... That's only, y'all only use it in December, I believe.
Okay.
It's fifty, fifty thousand that's set for, you know, for the end of December. The other three, the waiting goal was in case, like a couple of years ago, we had a hurricane. And y'all asked for a couple of laps, spin miles and run around and stuff like that. And y'all, you had discussed about giving something up, but there was nothing in the budget. So that's how we came to that actual three thousand for the budget case emergency purposes. We can always offer them giant trips. So dedicated, streaming the whole night, working on families, but we didn't want that. And that's why we don't use it, that's why we're not doing it. That becomes left over for, you know, the zone emergency work.
So you're still, you're good with eighteen thousand? Fine. You want to raise it to flat twenty, how many, how, what do you feel, one?
We can go, we can do the eight. The five for emergency purposes. And we might have one more, one again. And we might not have any.
Yeah.
We don't know, but at least there's something there.
I'm looking at maybe go with flat twenties, go up the department better.
But we're going to reserve the five for emergency purposes. And of course, you know. Wherever the city manager is, their family, where you discuss, you know, what they're doing.
Anything else?
I'd rather think we can bring it back next week and make a decision. Just one more vote.
So then, do we want to give staff direction to update the eighteen to twenty thousand for the fire department? Put the three percent across the board, but it's not being released till after. So then, so then that's noted, that once the evaluation system come back here and then setting the city manager salary at eighty-five thousand? Well, it's eighty-four or something.
If that's where we're at, we need to go ahead and make a motion to table seven, eight, nine. We can go ahead and go.
Whatever you guys want to do.
I'll make a motion that we table item seven, item eight, and item nine.
There's no other discussion, call the roll, please.
Councilor Reon?
Yes.
Councilor Wind?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Connaught?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number ten, consideration of possible action in regard to a letter of engagement of the Byron Company for the preparation of the city's two thousand nineteen fiscal audit. Movement?
I'll make a motion to discuss item number ten.
No, thank you. Discussion. Do we have an idea? That's another item that I, I want more auditing done after this year is over. I'll be leaving. I want to make sure that it's thorough. There's a lot of things that have gone on this year. I want to make sure that the auditor, I don't know if you know how it works, but how many months did they give? Three months? When they audited our books, what is it, three random months?
They took, they took, they took one month of tax.
And that's it. I'm not happy with that. I, I think we need to have more than one month audit, that's going to cost one month. It's not my money, it's the taxpayers' money. Just to leave, I mean, that's how it's always been. You know, one month, I thought it was three months. I would like an additional month, whatever random month they're going to do. So that's something else they're going to have to do under the budget.
Do you want to ask these auditors to, if they can have additional months or do you know?
No, no, I'm okay with these guys because that's how many the city uses so.
So as far as two thousand nineteen auditing, you want to do more than what they did for right now?
Yes, sir. Because that's, that's what this letter of engagement is for. Yes.
Yeah, for two thousand nineteen audit. So you'd have to go back and get another bid. But we could still take actions on item ten, with the dollar around in there.
Yes, sir.
The, the letter states that if you not there, you need a thousand five hundred. So if they charge more than eight thousand five hundred, it's definitely additional months to do that to confirm.
That's fine.
Any other discussion? Hey, does anybody have a?
So we need a motion to accept and engage Byron and Company for the two thousand nineteen audit. But with the instruction that it's going to be two, they'll have to do two test months instead of one.
Do you want to wait until we know how much it's going to cost?
The cost on that's going to be irrelevant. If we, if it's too much, we'll get somebody else to deal with it. But we still want to, if we want them to do two months, we know it's going to cost them money.
So I guess my question is, do you want to do staff direction and then have them come back saying, okay, it's going to be thirty-seven thousand dollars, not eighteen thousand five hundred?
Yes.
Table item number ten?
No, we, we need to get that letter on.
We've got, in order to get an audit done, this audit is supposed to be done before October first. This is September tenth or eleventh, whatever day we're on right now.
Yeah, actually, we won't have our first, our preliminary audit until the last week of October.
Don't table it, Amanda, because of what I'm asking for. I'm asking for extra stuff out of the auditor and for the taxpayers to pay for it. At a bare minimum, you guys decide what you want to do with this. I just want you to know that I believe that the city would benefit from an additional audit.
But we don't know what it's going to cost.
Right. Right, so don't just table this. If you want to accept this, accept it. If you don't, don't. But please capture something in a motion to where we can get additional audit and get a number for additional audit. Because one month, I just, there's too many other months in the year.
So what if, what if we just accepted this letter of engagement, went forward, and then we budgeted for additional months in our next audit?
Sounds good.
Does that sound good to the rest of the council? So then we need to make sure, Amanda, can you contact them and ask them how much two months would cost? That way we can put it in the budget. Is everybody okay with putting that in the budget? And then, so then I'll make a motion that we accept the letter of engagement with Byron Company.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? If there's another discussion, call the roll.
Councilor Reon?
Yes.
Councilor Wind?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Connaught?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item eleven, consideration of possible action in regard to a cooperative procurement leadership agreement with Choice Partners National Cooperative. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item eleven on the agenda?
Second. A while back, we had some contractors come in and we said, the first thing they said was, hey, do you use Blackboard? One of them says, no, don't. We use Choice Partners National Cooperative and it saves you one percent. We said, we're not a member of that. What do we need to prove? Contractor says you need to sign up. Does that sound fair? So this was several months back, right?
Yes.
We're already past the deal where we, we're not, we didn't buy anything from you. We don't plan on buying anything right this minute, but it doesn't mean that we don't want to be a member of Choice Partners National Cooperative. Basically, it just empowers us to save one percent over Blackboard purchases on things that the city uses. And once you're a member, does it cost us anything? It doesn't cost us anything. It's simple, yes or no?
Yeah. It's one percent, oh.
It's, they, they charge up to one percent when Blackboard charges two percent. So in different situations, we can actually save one percent if we go through Choice Partners.
And this is in conjunction with Harris County Department of Education?
This is actually another one. I think you're, you're talking about the H G A C or something like that? Or no?
They're both here, but what you're telling me, both of them are from Harris County.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that. I just know the contractor said, hey, this is what we use, it saves you one percent. So if we do it good, if we don't do it, I'm okay with it.
And we can enter into this agreement? Good?
Exactly, they're going to met us now and accept you as a member.
So then I'll make a motion that we approve going into a partnership with Choice Partners National Cooperative.
No. Any other discussion? There's no other discussion, call the roll, please.
Councilor Reon?
Yes.
Councilor Wind?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Connaught?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item twelve, consideration of possible action in regard to resolution number nineteen dash twenty-two. Authorizing the addition of Amanda Hines and Karen Simpson and removal of Barbara Shaw and Judy Murphy. On all accounts of tax, bull, and investment service for public funds. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item number twelve on the agenda?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I was, I would, me and Abby's parent are considered, we're able to do it, but we're not able to make any changes. And so there's some ones that we have a utility surplus that we can add in there and we, and we want more interest and we're working on it now. Which is what we have to have Karen and I need to handle our portion that councilor's going to, to make changes.
Judy's not here anymore.
No.
So neither one of these individuals is going to see. So we need some help with that.
And then once the city manager is there, then we'll be able to add any ethical taxes.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution nineteen dash twenty-two authorizing the addition of Amanda Hines, Karen Simpson, removing Barbara Shaw and Judy Murphy. On all accounts of tax bull and investment service for public funds.
Second. Any other discussion? There's no other discussion, call the roll.
Councilor Reon?
Yes.
Councilor Wind?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Connaught?
Yes.
Yes, but to that, you said consider, you want to approve it, right?
I approve, yes. Sorry about that. I just made a mistake.
Do we need to back though?
Okay. Let me re-sign this motion. I approve the action, the resolution nineteen dash twenty-two authorizing the addition of Amanda Hines, Karen Simpson. And removal of Barbara Shaw, Judy Murphy on all accounts of tax bull and investment services for public funds.
Second.
I'll second that.
Councilor Reon?
Yes.
Councilor Wind?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Connaught?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number thirteen, consideration of possible action in regard to closing the general fund I M M account at Texas Champion Bank. Movement?
Make a motion to consider item thirteen on the agenda?
I'll second that.
What account is this, ma'am?
This is a money market account for our general fund. And what we did was the funds we had, we moved them to Texas because we're able to earn a higher percentage of the interest than made at the bank. And so we really have no use for that account for counting what the access center and tax bull.
So this is just kind of in conjunction with the previous item? I'll make a motion that we close the general fund I M M account at Texas Champion Bank.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? There's no other discussion, call the roll.
Councilor Reon?
Yes.
Councilor Wind?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Connaught?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Consideration of, item fourteen, consideration of possible action to approve city of Kennedy police chief Rick Ash, interim city manager Chris Bratton. And council member Cynthia Sines to replace former council member Alberto Valderamos. And former city manager Barbara Shaw respectively as authorize signatures on all accounts slash documents at Texas Champion Bank. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item number fourteen on the agenda?
I'll second.
Discussion.
This is just under your first stages of the thing.
Yeah, I, I have a little bit of, a few questions. How purpose of the chief of police being on that? I mean, we did that in the past, why would we go back to doing that? There's six counselors up there, five counselors and the mayor. I'm just trying to figure out why.
What she brought in my kitchen was, had to go around the world, was just the availability sometimes. What we talked about is should be you all in that order, the chief being the last person called, not the black chief.
Correct.
But it involved you all for three or four times and you can't get two counselors. And or the city manager, so it's just, I have to, I have to check that. That's all.
Okay. And the check to all, would you require choosing?
No, 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 and I don't have anything against the chief. I'm just trying to figure out why would we put the chief of police on that when we have five counselors and the mayor? Plus the city manager, that's six people. But we have a problem, it's not here to decide.
We're taking quality, it doesn't work for sometimes. And the fact that, it's how you did do it, we have a preference.
Right. Okay. Any other discussion? There's no other discussion, call the roll.
I'll make a motion if we take action to approve the city of Kennedy police chief Ash, interim city manager Chris Bratton. And council member Cynthia Sines to replace the former council member Alberto Valderamos. And for the former, and the former city manager Barbara Shaw respectively. And authorize signatures on all accounts documents at Texas Champion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, call the roll.
Councilor Reon?
Yes.
Councilor Wind?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Connaught?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number fifteen, consideration of possible action in regard to an interim program with the Kennedy Independent School District for a school resource officer. Any movement?
I'll make a motion to consider agenda item number fifteen.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
The SRO officer is something that we have, we have in this company's budget.
If you're, what you were agreeing to is twenty-five percent of the salary, track the school district.
And then the school also takes care of an office, computer supplies, everything else, but we're using an old car, correct?
For the police chief.
Okay.
It'd be reconsidered since you're.
Because I did see that Colley at Kelly was going through some troubles with this right now. But it was the, essentially, the sheriff's department, which is the person who owns the commission. Was paying for all the supplies and the car and everything else and they were trying to increase it. But so our percentage is twenty-five percent and the school district is seventy-five percent, correct? Okay. Because they were trying to increase it ninety, ten, ninety on the school and ten on the county. So it's just curious, does the school feels comfortable with those numbers?
Yes, sir, if you look at the actual number of days worked on a school calendar, roughly seventy-five percent. So we went by the number of calendar days that they would be at the school and then the number of calendar days that were. That's, that is the standard, pretty common one to count seventy-five percent of the time.
So we will have a Kennedy police officer in the Kennedy schools?
Yes.
And it's just like eight hours a day, or does it go cast?
They work, they work a forty hours, forty hour weeks. The school, the superintendent kind of, you know, work out exactly one hour. I think they want them there a little bit later in the afternoon, so we'll kind of adjust that, but yes, it'd be a half day.
What if, I was going to say, what about like the school events? So like football games and is he going to be at, or he or she at those events or no?
No, the current agreement calls for the school to hire officers on an overtime basis. That's what we're doing now, we'll continue to do that.
Could be that officer.
He could sign up for it, but it'll be paid outside of that.
Outside of this.
Outside the center by the twenty-five cents.
I was reading over this on this weekend, I grabbed on page three of seven, section four point oh three. It says termination of agreement. This agreement may be terminated by either party at any time without a reason upon thirty day written notice to the other party. Will we, the city be notified or around the spot, like the city council as well? No, no holding back saying, we'll have a very go on email or text or a phone call saying that it's no longer going on. And what would happen with the twenty-five percent that we're giving to, would that be reimbursed?
We're going to speak with you in a second.
Yes.
We would have to phone the other seventy-five percent. Because we're paying for twenty-five percent of this officer.
The right to place that. But you would be notified immediately.
And the contract, is it year to year?
Yes.
You'd have to re-approve that every year in the country. And then we'd have to re-approve it every year.
Any other discussion?
And I ask, who's speaking?
Can I ask, who's picking up the Kennedy insurance on the officer?
The city of Kennedy.
He is, the officer, he is an employee with all the same insurance, whatever, everything.
So the officer, the officer will work for the City of Kennedy specifically, but is dispatched out to the school. So at the end of the day, he has control over that officer, not the school.
But his deal is seventy-five, twenty-five split.
Anything was wrong at school, we are liable.
Yes. You're already.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter who does anything, the city's still liable.
The city is just like any other police officer for the city. They have to be a licensed police officer.
Yes. And they, they will have that specialized training as a school resource officer. And if something goes wrong with that school, the officer's going anyway.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's not, I'm talking about a different type of incident. Not just, well, things going on, oh, you touched me. Incident.
And that's why you're special training.
You know, it's going on, look what's happening in the area.
Any other?
Anything.
Any other discussion on that?
Well, he will be wearing a body camera, right?
Yes. Oliver, I should just borrow your body cam.
Anything else?
So once we approve this, it goes to the school?
The school has their meeting Monday.
So that, okay.
And if, once they approve it, then I'll begin the process of driving by someone. Already have, already have interviews, so.
We just need to update the signature line. Yeah. That's what's this part, right?
Oh, yeah, that's why it's a drive.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, call it off, please.
Councilor Riordan?
Yes.
Okay. Motion.
I'll make a motion that we take action regarding the inter, um, interlocal agreement with the Kennedy Independent School District for a school resource officer.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, call it off.
Councilor Riordan?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item sixteen, consideration of possible action in regard to amending ordinance nineteen dash two, an ordinance establishing reimbursement of out of town expenses for council members. Movement?
Is that part of the project also?
I believe so, but it's on here and I don't know if it was intentionally put on here or not, I don't have enough information.
Because I understand that, um, one of the council members wanted on there, potentially they said, no, I don't, so.
Okay.
Now I have to keep in touch with another councilor.
Any movement?
I'll make a motion to disregard item number sixteen.
Two, uh, second.
I'll second.
Councilor Riordan?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number seventeen, consideration of possible action in regard to amending ordinance eighteen dash thirteen, an ordinance establishing rules of performance for city council meetings and public hearings and rules for media taking meetings. Movement?
I'll make a motion to reconsider agenda item number seventeen.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Joe Baker?
Joe Baker.
Thank you for allowing me to speak on this agenda. I understand there's a new state law that allows members of the public to speak to agenda items even if they've already spoken on the public comments. I think y'all know how I feel about this, I'm a big believer in transparency and we all know that the Open Meetings Act allows members of the public to report city council meetings. This, I think the ordinance is fine the way it is. I think it's being misread and misinterpreted to force all the cameras into the far back of the room, which is terrible for me. You can't see the people and be in very difficulty hearing the people, especially the ones whose microphones are pointed at the ceiling or, you know, away from their mouths or speaking loudly. But I just think this is a terrible place for city council meetings and I want you all to consider making a motion and voting to have the meetings in the auditorium the way that they work for years and years and work perfectly fine that way. It's more comfortable for the public. When you go in closed session, the public doesn't have to go out through the hallway or out into the porch. It's just a better place for meetings and it solves this problem. As far as the ordinance goes, um, it says video recorders are to be positioned in the back of the meeting room or along the aisle in such ways to not obstruct traffic or cause the path to be non-ADA compliant in spacing. And when I read that, what I understand is the camera can be there, or there, or there, or there, or there. Anyplace in the room, as long as you're not creating obstruction, as long as you're not blocking anyone's view or blocking their ability to move. And that's my definition of obstruction. This room, as far as I'm concerned, is here. I mean, this is a separate room, as far as I'm concerned. I don't think you can call this the meeting room when it is as difficult to see or hear as it is in the back part of the room. So I think the ordinance is fine. Um, as council members, you can instruct the mayor to enforce it correctly by, by a vote of three to two or vote of five to zero. Um, but I really think the best solution to this problem is to have it over in the auditorium because it allows plenty of room for everybody, works fine if there's three people or if there's three hundred people. So that's what I would encourage you to do. Anyone else?
I know the last time we talked about it, we kind of tipped it because I think Justin was gonna look into streaming, the videotaping, did you get anything on that?
There was that, but then there was also the question to the attorney, is there any type of archiving retention records? Um, from what I can find out, no, because we are not, there's no, the Open Meetings Act doesn't require us to do it. So if we just do it, we're just creating a separate service that's not mandated by any local government code. Um, so my, when I saw this on the agenda tonight, what I had thought about this a lot. And if anybody has a different idea, or if anybody wants to move the meeting somewhere else, this is just kind of my thought process. We create a city Facebook page. I, I, y'all know this, I do it for the county, um, and every commissioners' court. All it requires is a smart device, which, um, Chief Ash had said that there's an iPad mini that did not get sold in the surplus auction for this reason. Get a tripod and an adapter to hold that tripod and us just live stream it. And we can set it up right here by Amanda, she can hit start and it would just stream it right here. Um, but for the people who are wanting to record these, uh, record these meetings, we can designate a press area. So for example, in here, there's no reason why we couldn't in front of this area right here where the tables at or set it up on the side. Um, I think where the tables at is actually great because it, there's nothing behind it and not obstructing anything from their rear angle, so people can just set up their camera right there. If there's an overflow, then ask them to proceed to the back of the room where they still have the opportunity to record. Y'all have thoughts on that? I mean, Facebook's free, um, all we have to do, I wouldn't want it to go on Amanda's account. What we did is we created an account called CJ Carnes, first name, last name. That's a personal account. And then we created a business page, which is Carnes County, Texas. And we stream every single one of our commissioners' courts on there. And it's, for us, it's a great thing because if you can't attend the meeting, but you want to know what's going on and you just kind of, or you don't want to have to go to the county clerk's office to ask for the minutes that has to then later on be approved, um, this is just a quick access where people can discuss this. Now, as far as retention archive, I was looking it up and we're not a municipality of fifty thousand or larger, so there's no type of retention schedule for the videos.
That's correct.
I hope you were back too, maybe we just probably need to move that podium.
And that's what I was gonna say, and it might be better to even move the podium. That way, the people who are sitting in the back of the room, if we have a full meeting, sometimes I've heard complaints how if you're standing at this podium because of the wall barrier, it's harder than it here back there. So if we moved our podium over here to face us and the rest of the administration and then created, designated a press area, we can designate one if we ever convene into the auditorium, either to one of the sides, that's a press area. And then just know, if the press area gets full for people who are actually recording, so that's, I would say that needs to be a standard. So if you're gonna sit in that area, that's a video recording area. So, um.
How about if they don't want to use their tripod?
Well, we talked about that last time, if they're sitting in the audience and they just have their phone, as long as they're not searching somebody behind them, then they're okay.
Okay.
We talked about that last time.
Yeah. Amanda, would you mind doing that? If that was the motion, that was approved, would you mind? I mean, I can help you if you need help doing that.
The only, well, my question is, we're supposed to be switching our website up this weekend? When we switch our website, can we do it off of our website?
Um, you, you can set, you would have, it's a whole nother, it's gonna be a lot easier using a smart device. Because then you have to use a broadcasting, uh, computer software and it, it's not free. So it's like twenty dollars a month. Whereas the iPad, it does, I mean, it's not gonna have any surveys, we're just gonna connect it to the wifi. There's your one time cost for the tripod, one time cost for the attachment device, so you're looking at maybe fifty, sixty dollars. And then all, as long as that iPad is working, a working iPad, like it doesn't crash or anything, um, you'll never have a recurring cost.
If you ever, um, you ever remember.
Do y'all, does the city administration have any problem? City attorney?
If there's thirty. If I can work it, I can do it.
I mean, it's, it's no different than working a person on Facebook. It's, and, and, and then later on down the road, I, I archive everything on the county website. I don't know which webs, I know we're switching websites, I don't know what the new website's gonna be like. But that's not, I mean, we don't have to do that, or that could at least be considered later on, since we are switching.
And then we're still in the, in the impression that it is to get school, like the last time, that we just moved to the meeting room and we're okay, but it's, you know, I'm not.
The only thing we need to add to that is when we're gonna be in the auditorium, we need to get some tables that address.
Skirting.
Yes, sir.
We actually put tablecloths on them today.
Okay. Okay.
So you have to.
We have that.
Yeah, so they did.
That's it.
Okay, uh, any other discussion on that?
Excuse me?
Yes.
So is that saying that the public can't put their phones or y'all are gonna?
Listen. We're gonna, we're waiting for a motion.
Oh, you're waiting for a motion?
We're not supposed to hear from the public right now, so I apologize, I know what your concern is.
There's a new law that came in that says.
Yes, I know, but it's only specified if you sign up.
Okay.
And then you come and address the council on that specific item. It does not, uh, does not address talking from the seat position. Uh, but I understand your concern. Uh, you could have to the meeting, talk to the city secretary or the city manager, I'm sure they'll be able to answer this.
Do you have a motion, Justin?
That's not true.
So my motion would be designating a recording press area, which in this room would be in front of the old pass through window, would probably sit at least three or four chairs. That would be the designated press area. The city will also then create a city Facebook page that we will livestream all of our regular and special meetings and budget workshops and everything else. And then if there's overflow from that press area, which you have to be recording and streaming, um, if there's an overflow, then go into the back of the room. If we notice at that point in time, uh, there is an excess of a lot of people in the room trying to record, worries about obstruction, then the council then can consider reconvening into the auditorium.
Second.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
But that also includes, um, if they say right there, like Brenda said, they can, from their lap without obstructing the.
Was that in your motion?
That's still, is that covered in the motion as well?
Let's make that a part of the motion, that you record from your seat as long as you're not obstructing the view of the person.
So you're not having a tripod or you're just, you're folding your hand.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, call it off.
Councilor Riordan?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Condon? Yes. Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number eighteen, consideration and action in regard to the two thousand twenty Texas Department of Commerce Aviation Division Routine Airport Maintenance Program Grant. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item eighteen on the agenda.
Discussion.
Not too decided, probably. Yeah, what else could I say on the airport one? Just back, I said, we have to attend to the, uh, the commission this afternoon. And I mean, I'll talk about it a few weeks ago, the work was getting closer to being done. Airport's open, they're, it really does do good, a plane landed while we were there. Uh, also, the commission wanted to make sure that they not move in the next month or so. Simply recently, it's, uh, for here, we're gonna come out and second before we proceed. We can see all the items, you're, you're, it looks like.
They're gonna let us know on what day that we can.
Yeah, they're gonna report it, they can.
Okay.
And you're welcome there any day if you ever want to go up there.
Absolutely.
This particular item, the, the ramp, uh, grant, um, this is just for us to do the necessary things so that we can continue to be eligible for the ramp grant.
Any other discussion?
The way it's been scheduled out for reimbursement to your expense.
Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number eighteen.
I'll second that.
If there's no other discussion, call it off, please.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nineteen, consideration of possible action to approve a construction contract change order for the free lift station project in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item nineteen on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
That's just an additional.
There was, there's an auto dollar in there, but from what, what Ellen explained, it's, we can no longer use this and it needs to be upgraded. And so that's what the change order is.
You said auto dollar, right? For sending out calls. Any other discussion? Uh, I have to ask, the number is within the twenty percent of the total bid, correct?
Yes, sir. The total bid was eighty-five, eighty-four thousand, it's a change, so.
It raises to eighty-seven thousand, seventy dollars.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion.
I'll make a motion, we have our agenda item number nineteen.
I'll second it.
If there's no other discussion, call it off.
Councilor Riordan?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Condon? Yes. Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number twenty, consideration of possible action to approve a profession, uh, proposal from DeNora Water Technologies in the amount of seventy-one thousand, nine hundred dollars even to complete media changeout services for the cottonwood arsenic removal plant. Movement?
Make a motion that we consider item twenty on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Tom, can you tell me, can you tell us what that's for?
Well, there's the media filters and Hector was actually trying to budget it in his next budget. We went and we looked over it and he actually has funds to do it in this fiscal year. So they're going to, DeNora is, once they approve, DeNora will come out in the next couple of days and change out all the media filters.
On the backside of that water treatment plant, we talked about that, it's, it's very complicated looking to use the filters and it takes the arsenic out of the water. It apparently, I want to bring the water. But apparently it's just part of the process.
And he has enough money left in his budget right now to do that?
Yes, they, they do it every two years.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Um, just on a scale of one to ten, do y'all happen to know what, what the filter looks like once, once I see it?
I haven't seen one that's, uh, changed.
We can see it at this point, and so they have to shut the system down, open that up, pull the media out and expose that because it's higher than the current country.
I, I do have a quick question. So I'm looking at the pricing and payment schedule. So the seventy-one thousand, nine hundred dollars, that's for the removal of three hundred and sixty-four cubic feet of biooxide, E thirty-three arsenic removal. But what about the, are, do we have to be for the labor and supervision of the twenty-three, twenty-six thousand, eight fifty?
What it, okay, so the, look right now, the, they are gonna do the, we're paying for the, the material, but the twenty-six, eight fifty won't be until the next fiscal year is coming in this year.
Any other discussion?
Should we probably note that before we sign it?
We're only approving seventy-one thousand.
Right, which is partial of this contract. This contract's for both seventy-one thousand, nine hundred dollars for the removal of the arsenic This contract's worth $71,900 for the removal of the arsenic, and then $26,850 for labor and supervision. So, I don't know if we should strike that and sign, and only sign it for the first die, and then re-sign it again for the next die, or for the next bullet point in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, they could have made a motion.
What about the agenda? I, I'm just saying, the agenda item says $71,900.
So, you don't put the whole time on that?
No, I, well, I don't know if you can, because that's not what the agenda item says. So, I'm saying, what if we sign this contract, strike the second bullet point in there initially, and saying we're approving the $71,900, then come back in the next fiscal year, October 1, and then approve the same contract, striking the top bullet point, but not the bottom bullet point for the $26,850?
Well, the, what's, we just, yeah, the, the agenda item just, just addresses the $71,000, and if you're going to, for whatever reason, the price is lower, then you could make a couple more bucks, but.
No, I, the actual contract itself, that's, that's in here, has both in here, both for $71,900, and then the labor and supervision is $26,850. What I'm saying is, this is the contract that the city has to execute. Should we strike out the bottom bullet point, which identifies $26,850, have, have the city execute that, then come back in the next fiscal year, and amend the top bullet point out of there, and do the second payment?
Yeah, we'd say, we'd just go back to the board, have them, this contract.
Okay. Well, either we're striking, striking it out, or have them.
They'll do the $26,850 here, if you want to know that.
Right.
It's right. The only, if I'm a people.
We're, we're only approving 71,000.
Then I will make a motion that we approve agenda item number 20.
And I'll second that.
If there's no other discussion, call it off.
Councilor Yanis?
Yes.
Councilor Lynn?
Yes.
Councilor Science?
Yes.
Councilor Connor?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item 21, consideration of possible action to approve the purchase of a 2020 F250 crew cab, six-point-five-foot bed, four-by-four upgrade, from HGAC in the amount of $51,186 even. Any movement?
I'll make a motion to the state, item number 21.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
What is this beautiful, if we were to buy it? Or, or, okay. She, I believe it's going to be said, she, for us.
HGAC, do we remember that, co-op? We're already a member of that. We can purchase from HGAC. Okay, so, they're going to invoice off of by-boarders, I just want to make sure that everyone understands it.
Good job.
And we're okay. The reason I brought up by-boarders, it, it satisfies the legal obligation, right, for going off the budget. Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve item number 21, purchase of.
And this is coming out of their capital out, not, this is coming out of their capital outlet? Okay, go ahead, Bernie.
No, no problem, no problem. Uh, approve the purchase of a 2020 F250 crew cab, six-point-five-bed, four-by-four upgrade from HGAC in the amount of $51,186.
And I'll second that.
Juan, what color is that truck?
Yes.
I said that on purpose. I'll tell you later. If there's no other discussion, call it off.
Councilor Yanis?
Yes.
Councilor Lynn?
Yes.
Councilor Connor?
Yes.
I'm going to get blind and find a red Ford when it's running around town. Item number 22, consideration of possible action to approve the purchase of an aluminum bootneck foam trailer from Diamondback Emergency Vehicles LLC, in the amount of $70,650. Movement.
Make a motion to consider item 22 on the agenda?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
That foam trailer is the trailer you use for spraying foam for. Which is something we don't have right now.
We do not have one.
That's pretty neat.
And then, this is going to be a combo, combo, it's going to have a foam trailer on, or the foam is behind it, and then the rest of it's going to be, we have, anytime you're going to use the foam, it's going to be out of the wall. So, during and out of, you know, the hot seat, and then you can go in there and do it all.
Do you have a picture of it?
I got a picture of the trailer, but not, it's not going to be.
It's got an outfit, it's just.
It's not outfitted, it's box.
One of the couple, I was looking for that, on the airport today, and once then, you were on the runway, and he said, uh, or you have a, this happened to me, you know, you have a, uh, landing gear, not go down properly, have it circle, get it started by that fuel, it's coming down, land on the ground on that plane. He said, of course, I have a building, but they noted about this, I have a building, and we had advanced notice, you'd get out there, you'd be following the runway. Well, guess what? We had to build the foam to the runway.
What's the length of the truck? How far are we on our E for CBO?
We'll have to have a CBO.
No, two fifty on.
You'll have to have a CBO. To pull that trailer and that truck, you'll have to have, you'll have to.
Is there any other discussion on this?
And I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the aluminum bootneck foam trailer for Diamondback Engine, Diamondback Emergency Vehicles LLC, in the amount of $70,650.
And this is, this is by-board pricing, or some type of by-board, okay?
Yeah, same.
Same as the by-board.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Councilor Yanis?
Yes.
Councilor Lynn?
Yes.
Councilor Connor?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, guys. Yes, uh, motion to recess?
Motion to recess.
I'll second it.
Item 23, closed session. City council will move closed session in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code under 551.074, personnel matters, to hear complaint or charge against an officer or employee, and 551.071, consultations with attorney regarding matters in which the media attorneys, the governmental body, under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct, and the state law of Texas, clearly requires discussion in closed session. A, hear complaint or charge against the city secretary, any movement?
Make a motion that we go in the closed session?
I'll second that.
Councilor Yanis?
Yes.
Councilor Lynn?
Yes.
Councilor Science?
Yes.
Councilor Connor?
Yes.
Motion passes at this time, 7:48 PM, we're going in closed session. It is 8:20 PM, as, uh, we're going to reconvene in open session. Following closed session, any portion of the closed session, the city council, Kennedy will reconvene in open session, take any action necessary for the items discussed in closed session. Any movement?
I'll make a motion that we have the city attorney conduct a formal investigation against the city secretary. And I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, call it off, please.
Councilor Yanis?
Yes.
Councilor Lynn?
Yes.
Councilor Connor?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 25, interim city manager report. Chris or Bruce?
Uh, let me.
I've been here longer than you.
Enter, enter.
Yeah, that's right. Employee of the month, uh, when they take it back, he went on work. Uh, we, I think it's, how do you do it? It's almost like we just talked about performance. There's some good employees, I've worked with a lot of them the last several weeks, and, but I have, I tasked Joel quite a bit, uh, he was, he stood up to it, so I recommend Joel need to be employee of the month. Water sewer line updates, did, did, no, I don't know, something in there, man. I wanted to give you a little bit of update, Chris will be doing it next week, when you have to lead him to, made a lot of movement, and led us to contracts for, we rode around the streets today.
Uh, yeah, Lavaca, we're looking forward to the sewer lines for Lavaca, they're on third?
Yes, I know.
More third street, Lavaca, we approve those contracts moving forward, and we, they should start to work for them in a month.
Can you tell us?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're going to look at a, getting an engineer report on fourth street, uh, went out and looked at where that manhole is, ran through the second round, and that is beating bullets, point, anywhere around. So, we want an engineer to look at that and discuss, that's on sixth, and we want an engineer to make sure we're not flooding the yards, and all the drainage is properly, so we'll have our engineer work with the engineer, the rest of it, and make sure that Cleveland, right, in sixth, get proper grading, and proper, uh, water sewer placement lines, they're going to go ahead and put the water sewer down in those, and once that's done in, they'll take that.
That will get the proper pour samples and all that stuff.
Yes.
Just, what is this, we're all buried on that side of it.
We want to make sure that's done right, and we want to go back, sit back down the road, and go, oh, we should have had an engineer look at it, and we put it up front, all of it up front. So, you'll see, that's why we're going to bring up, I think, the main hall streets are a little brown today, there's several, you'll notice that, uh, there's a lot of, uh, the line, more instance, you know, for the, locate, they cross, cut a lot of stuff, that they sort of, so they've already, they've located, that the mark, and it's, the people, the bigs are asking, hey, are they fixing to do something, probably.
What about street, open little lines? Lavaca?
Yeah, that's what.
We all want to get that.
They're going to have to, they're going to have to put the sewer lines down, but then we'll be ready to move in, and we'll curb, and we can work.
And we're okay on the manhole, the plant from Indiana?
Yeah. I'm not high above. I think we're, we're okay right there, right now. One of the things we've asked the streets to do is to, the water sewer and streets to prioritize what needs, what's the worst, what needs to be done first, so we can look at these things and bring it to y'all and say, this is the priority list, and we can create a plan for how we're going to attack this with the money we've got, the budget.
Tom.
And then the last thing I had on here is, in your heart, this is, I can't imagine what y'all seen from that heart, you see, the, uh, uh, it rang between the, you and our first foreman, for services, you know, certainty, and us getting the blood, and, uh, and also the accident, uh, we had, uh, we had very, uh, specific, Eastland, uh, we had a draft, and we had it in Paul City, looking for confidence, uh, Chief Bryan had the, they worked there before, this commission, they, they sent back orders, uh, and since then, we've sent them, and our time, we take it back. So, the next few weeks, anyway, if we all finalize that, which has a focus, we, you know, we'll have that very, very, we will not find, we will notice, probably, tell that for it, it's.
Good job.
I'll ask.
But we'll see you back Friday.
Oh, absolutely, everybody, I've got to surrender.
Hey, Alfonso, did you tell, did you try to send one, a text?
No, no, no.
All right, guys.
I'm only a roaming fee, that's all.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, guys. Okay, did you guys get the sheet back here?
I'll be, I'll be back.